So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Tonight's invocation is from Oasis Church, Andy Rupp. You can come up there.
Thank you. Again, my name is Andy. Thank you, Tom, and I do come on behalf of Oasis Church. We're a local faith community that meets in the Holly Springs High School. So I come on behalf of them and thank you for the honor of the invocation. I also come as a father and thankful for this town and for the many areas that we enjoy. And I also come as a runner who loves all the sidewalks in this town and the communities. It's the most engaging community of runners I've ever been a part of. So I appreciate what the town does to engender that. But let's open with prayer. God, I thank you for this day and for this group of men and women seeking to build something more than just a town, but a community, built on all the things that we all hold dear: love, trust, faith, family. And I just thank you for that. And I thank you that each day that we wake up and we can choose to open our minds, open our hearts, open our hands, and to do the hard work of building a community that's better each and every day. So I thank you for that. And I just ask that as those gathered here do that hard work and roll up their sleeves to make decisions and judgments and things that you would give them the wisdom and the sound judgment and the peace as they work in these endeavors and they go forth and decide decisions for this town to try to build it into the community that it can be. I ask that you would bless them. I ask that you would bless this business that is done here tonight. And we just thank you for all these things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item four, adjustment approval of the October 1st, 2019 meeting agenda. Councilwoman Sherry.
Motion to approve the minutes and consent agenda with the following changes: none.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Agenda item, I'm sorry, number five is public comment. And we have one signed up, Tony Perna. And Tony, for the record, just name an address. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Tony Perna, 4901 Sunset Forest Circle, Holly Springs. And members of the town council, Mr. Harrington, town manager, Mr. Chifano, town lawyer, and Linda McKinney, town clerk, thank you for the Tuesday meeting that you invited us to. And us is the Citizen of the Year Award Committee. And that's made up of 22, 21 past citizens of the year. We make up the committee that chooses each year the next one. The Citizen of the Year Committee would like to thank you for the meeting last Tuesday and to reiterate, the COE Committee, the Citizen of the Year Committee, has proceeded with taking nominations for this year's Citizen of the Year, just as we have for the past 22 years. The form for the nomination can be found on our Facebook page, Holly Springs Citizen of the Year. We're not sure what level of support the town will be giving us this year, but we want to thank you for all the support that we received from you in the past. Whatever decision the council arrives at regarding the Citizen of the Year Award, we, the Citizen of the Year Committee, want to clarify for the public that this award will continue as it has for the past 22 years. And we hope for the support of the town as it has provided us in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item 6A, I'm actually going to move that. Commissioner Cozy is running late, so I'm going to move that to the bottom of recognitions. And we're going to go to agenda item 6B, which is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And Matthew Schwab is here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew Schwab. I am a almost, I'm a 22-year-old Holly Springs native. I live with my parents. I have two brothers and our dog Daisy in Holly Springs, North Carolina. And I'm glad to share with you about my life. I am previously, I mentioned that I live in North Carolina. I live with my parents, my two brothers, and our dog Daisy here in this proud town of Holly Springs. I graduated from Holly Springs High School in June of 2017 with an occupational course of study diploma. I also have Down Syndrome. I'm a proud Wake County Public School System alumnus, and I attended Wake Tech. And as part of my program, I worked for the Department of Health and Human Services. I worked in the North Carolina General Assembly as a paid intern. I worked at 321 Coffee as a barista. 321 Coffee is a coffee shop stacked by people with disabilities. 321 serves delicious coffee at the North Carolina State Farmers Market. Thursdays through Sundays, I also serve on the advisory committee. I worked at the Holly Springs Chick-fil-A. I have worked there for almost five years as a dining room host and food runner, and you've probably seen me there. I volunteer at GEG's Playhouse, a Down Syndrome achievement center that offers free programs to anyone with Down Syndrome and support to their families. I'm an, I serve as an ambassador and co-president on the Generation G Youth Advisory Board Program there. As you can tell, I am, I'm always being comfortable in front of a microphone. I love to advocate for people with disabilities. I love Down, speaking, spoken about Down Syndrome many times, including at the North Carolina Governor's Mansion. I've also spoken on behalf of GEG's Playhouse, 321 Coffee. I've spoken at the YMCA, Wake County Public School Systems, Better Palooza, Raleigh Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities, elementary school classrooms, and various fundraisers. And I have several more engagements coming up. I plan to live on my own, be a public speaker, and marry my long-term girlfriend when the time is right. I had Down Syndrome before I was born. I'll have it my whole life. But as you can see, it's just one part of me. Feel free to notice my differences. But please focus on the overwhelming ways I and others with disabilities are just like each of you. And here's some stuff that I would like for you guys to focus on. First is to use people-first language. For example, say, "Man, I'm with Down Syndrome." Instead of saying, "Downsman," do not use the R-word. The R-word means retarded. And don't say it improperly. The phrases like "that's so retarded" are demeaning to people like me who have mental retardation. And also, I want you guys to realize that people with disabilities are people first and probably more likely than they are different. I want you to treat people with disabilities who would want to be, I want you to treat people with disabilities the way you would want to be treated. And town council and mayor, I encourage for you guys to have, to search for any opportunities to employ any individual with a disability that lives in this proud town. This is my business called Matthew Schwab Speaks. Please visit my website at MatthewSchwabspeaks. And with me, I have my business cards. So you got, so you can contact me.
I'll take one.
We'll all take one.
I'll definitely take one. And Matthew, thank you very much for telling your story. We do appreciate that. And what we're doing for the town, we are recognizing Down Syndrome Awareness Month the month of October in the town of Holly Springs. And I urge all citizens to gain a better understanding of Down Syndrome and to help children and adults with this condition living fulfilling lives. So I'd like to hand you this proclamation from the town of Holly Springs.
Matthew, Matthew, please come on.
Here. We got your card. We want you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Randy, do you think we can take a picture of Matthew like we did with the other and post his presentation? Because I think he's got a lot of wisdom that everybody should see. So if we could show that, that would be fabulous. Matthew, can you come back out?
Come on in. You hear him? Take a picture. Yeah.
See, Matthew also works at the movie theater because I just saw him there the other day. So he has a lot of responsibilities. Impressive. Very impressive, Matthew.
Great. Again, thank you. Agenda item 6C, which is Dyslexia Awareness Month. And Karen Austin is here to present. She's from the Triangle Area Dyslexia Advocacy Group, correct?
Yes, thank you. That is a tough act to follow. All right. So thank you to the town of Holly Springs for recognizing October as Dyslexia Awareness Month also. I think I speak for most parents of a dyslexic child when I say that we're very aware of dyslexia each and every day with our children. Interestingly, while statistics say 20% of the population is suggested to have dyslexia, only about 5% are ever actually identified. Dyslexia is a neurological condition that happens at the neuron level, and it creates difficulties with accurate and fluent word recognition, poor spelling, and a poor ability to decode words. As most elementary teachers will tell you, letter reversals are normal until the third grade, and they are. However, there are many other symptoms that can also be observed that could help in identifying a potential dyslexic child. And as with most things, the earlier it's detected, the easier it is to remediate. This is certainly not an all-inclusive list, nor does every person with dyslexia have all of these symptoms. But these graphics show you a few of the more typical characteristics of the dis-related learning disabilities. Additionally, common comorbidities of dyslexia include not only dysgraphia and dyscalculia, but also ADHD, oppositional defiance disorder, anxiety, and depression. As I started this journey with my daughter two years ago here in Holly Springs, I found it difficult to find any local resources and support to help us navigate the process. I started a local Facebook group hoping to connect and commiserate with others in the same situation. And now, two years later, we have grown to over 200 passionate and amazing members across the state of North Carolina. We have met with politicians in DC. We spoke into the North Carolina Department of Instruction. We participated in a press conference. We actually have people speaking at the Wake County School Board meeting tonight also. And we are continually engaging and educating parents and schools about literacy issues. Studies show that 60% of students are able to read no matter what the instruction is. However, the remaining 40%, only 20 of those are expected to be dyslexic. Through the efforts of our Triangle Group, we are advocating to improve literacy instruction for all students, not just our dyslexic children. The sobering facts are that almost half of our first through third graders in North Carolina are not literate. Even more sobering is that this literacy deficit is likely to stick with these children into high school and beyond. In fact, it's widely believed that 70% of the prison population is illiterate. If schools would implement the scientifically proven structured literacy method of teaching instead of clinging to balance or holdword instruction, these numbers wouldn't look this dire. In 2013, only 39% of North Carolina third graders were below grade level in literacy. Last year, it was up to 44%. We are very thankful to the town of Holly Springs that you've chosen to participate in proclaiming October's National Dyslexia Awareness Month. We appreciate you helping us shine a light on the basic need for structured literacy for not only our dyslexic children, but for all struggling readers, so we don't continue down this path of failure. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, like you had stated before, the town is making a proclamation and recognizing that October of 2019, the town of Holly Springs, and I urge all citizens to become better educated about dyslexia and to help create a better community for individuals who are living with dyslexia. And we'd like to give you a proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is agenda item 6D, Community Planning Month Proclamation.
Good evening. So this is the 20th year, I believe, that we are celebrating either National Community Planning Month or World Town Planning Day in Holly Springs, which is very exciting. Several years ago, the American Planning Association, who oversees the American Institute of Certified Planners that all of your professional planning staff have obtained, celebrates National Community Planning Month every October to celebrate the benefits of planning in our community. And planning is a process of visioning how a town's going to look, feel, grow, and define itself. And due to all the careful planning over the last several decades is really why Holly Springs looks and feels like it does today. And so, planning has many benefits for a community, promotes quality development, helps establish neighborhood and community character, sustainable growth, helps enhance our tax base, and also a mixture of a tax base, depending on how that town chooses to grow. And we are focusing more on that commercial residential balance, and that starts with planning. We influence how the appearance of the community will be, working on encouraging a variety of housing options. We work closely with Parks and Recreation in preserving open space and trying to find quality parkland for our residents, and overall improving quality of life. This past year, planning's been very busy. We completed the gateway signage at the intersection of Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road, starting to establish where our boundaries are with our neighboring communities and welcoming visitors and our residents alike. We finished the installation of the wayfinding signage throughout the community, and that once again is not just for visitors, but for our residents to understand all of the wonderful facilities that the town has. We have been working diligently on a lot of community engagement on the new land use and community character plan that we're going to discuss again later this evening. The Tree Advisory Committee was established at the very end of last year, and they started meeting and are still working on organizing themselves and are going to really become a true, great benefit to the community in educating everyone about the importance of trees and our natural surroundings. We also worked on and had the Street Tree Maintenance Ordinance updated and modified, and that is helping us move toward Tree City USA designation. And then also, this past year in January was when planning started taking over the care and maintenance of the Norris-Holland Hair House, coordinating with multiple departments to get it secured and repaired as best as we can so it didn't see any more infiltration from rain. And luckily, it sold this month. And so, it is in the hands of a great family right here in Holly Springs. So planning gets involved with so many different things. It's not just current development. It is looking at long-range planning, historic preservation, tree preservation, many different topics. And so, it is very exciting, and we have three different boards that we work with now. We have the Planning Board, the Board of Adjustment, and the Tree Advisory Committee. And so, citizen planners make a huge difference in our community. It is not just about professional staff. And so, right now, today was our first announcement. In October, November, we seek interested individuals from our community to fill positions on our Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, so we hope we can get and continue to have a wonderful group of residents to assist us every year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gina. A lot of work, for sure, and we do appreciate that. The mayor would like to give a proclamation, and obviously, he's not here, but he'd like to proclaim October 2019 as Community Planning Month in the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Congratulations. So I'm going to go back to agenda item 6A because I see we have, I think, all the parties here for this presentation. This is the State Fire Marshal's Office to present the ISO rating to Holly Springs Fire Department. And with that being said, we have several parties here. We have North Carolina Insurance Commissioner Mike Cozy here. Thank you for coming. We also have North Carolina State Fire Marshal's Insurance Derrick Colston and Tony Bailey that are here, correct? And I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members. I noticed Mayor Sears decided not to show up.
Take a vacation. He's on vacation. I'm filling it.
I'm Mike Cozy. It's an honor, privilege for me to serve as your insurance commissioner and state fire marshal. And it's an honor and a privilege for me to be here tonight to bestow this honor on your fire department. We're here to celebrate a great achievement, the improved rating of Holly Springs Fire and Rescue to the highest ranking class, Class 1. This is a great honor and achievement for the Holly Springs Fire and Rescue, but it took a lot more than hard work of the firefighters to achieve this rating. It took the hard work and dedication of Chief Leroy Smith and all of his firefighters and first responders, both career and volunteer, to get us where we are tonight. Let's give the firefighters and first responders a round of applause. It also took the hard work of town and county officials to provide the financial and administrative support to make the Holly Springs Fire and Rescue Department the top-notch organization it is today, and you deserve a round of applause also. In every county in North Carolina and America, fire departments are the center of the community. And fire and rescue departments can't thrive without the support of the members of the community. So let's all thank our community supporters. You get a round of applause, too. I also want to thank our chief state fire marshal, Brian Taylor. Brian couldn't be with us tonight. And the staff at the office of state fire marshal, we have some of those here. Since I was sworn in on New Year's Eve 2017, I was sworn in at a fire department, by the way, I've asked the entire Department of Insurance, including the office of state fire marshal, to make sure that we're consumer-friendly, customer-friendly. I've insisted that our OSFM inspectors and staff work to help fire departments improve. They've responded positively, and we're seeing improved class ratings at fire departments all over North Carolina. So I want to thank, I guess I should give you guys a hand. Thanks to our inspector. Let's give them a hand. And, you know, I don't have to tell you the history. You go back to 1943. But over the decades, as this area grew and the needs changed, so did the fire service. And from that rural fire department, you've grown to where you are today. And of course, Cinder, the fire dog, Cinder here.
He's here, Cinder's here.
Can we bring Cinder up? I see Cinder when I go around the state. Cinder probably knows me. Can Cinder do a presentation here? Is that allowed? Is that permissible?
Go ahead.
Can Cinder do the stop, drop, and roll demonstration? Cinder, how are you?
First of all, hey. Tell these people why. I'm high. Hey. We use Cinder to help prevent fires and help prevent injuries. That's our goal, so that people don't need our services. One of the things you teach people to never go back into a house that's on fire. So well, that's Cinder. Cinder, if we go back into a house that's on fire, what can happen? What happens? Right? So we never go back into that house. And of course, as children get older, we teach them how to stop, drop, and roll.
Come back here.
Cinder, I want you to show all these people how to stop, drop, and roll.
So we're really in good company here at Holly Springs Fire and Rescue. And I'm wrapping it up, but just so you'll know, you're in the top 1% of all fire departments in the nation. And Holly Springs, I mean, this is a big deal. You're only the 11th fire department in North Carolina to achieve this rating. The latest statistics I have from the nation is 2015, but we only had 178 fire departments in the whole United States that had a Class 1. And so, this is a huge honor, and I just want to say congratulations and call up our OSFM team and all the members of the Holly Springs Fire and Rescue to come on up and get this award. Get your picture made for the press.
Yes.
Charlie Bowden, my junior. Eric, what do you offer? Oh, that was 20.
Congratulations. I can tell on your face, this is exciting.
I know that.
You guys didn't know?
No, we did not know.
Nobody knew.
That's why the chief is. Fantastic.
Somebody in our office had that idea, because she and Barry's got her picture on the elevator and Bill and Fox.
Yeah. That's awesome.
Y'all have a safe trip going back. I know you guys go to Ashboro and Nash, so be careful. Wow. That is amazing.
The department had it in it, and the support that we've received from the council, the mayor, Randy, Daniel, the community, there are just so many things. But it's, like you said, it's a team effort. This rating goes to water supply, which engineering and Luncy had a big hand in, and Public Works. They helped us get to where we needed to get. I don't have specifics to say thank you tonight for people, so I would like to be able to come at a future meeting and specifically talk about the challenges and what we've done over the seven years that I've been here to get to this point. So we were at a 4.9S, and to go to that from a 1 is truly a feat and a team effort. So if that's okay, I would like to maybe get on the agenda somewhere down the road so I can specifically tell you all the stuff that we did, the challenges, the roadblocks, everything that we overcame to get there.
That'd be great.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner, again, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
1.3. Okay. So we're a 1.3, which is the rural area outside of the town is a 3. We were a 9 there before, so that's a big improvement. In a nutshell, it's going to mean some homeowners' insurance savings for people in the rural area, and it's also going to mean some substantial savings in the town.
That's right. Yep.
Thank you.
Also, good work.
Thank you again.
Yep. Awesome. Awesome. Chief, I think you feel like it's Christmas, Derrick, right? Your face was shocked.
I know.
Wow, great news.
Fantastic.
Yep. So far, a great night. So we're going to go to Agenda Item 7A, Street Tree Replacement Pilot Program, and we'll look for Matt Beard. I don't know how you're going to top that, Matt, but wow. You'll do.
Seriously, we've got the All-Star lineup tonight.
Sorry.
Come on, guys. Okay, so the purpose of me being in front of you tonight is to review the Tree Advisory Committee, or TAC, recommendation for expenditure of Street Tree Replacement Pilot Program funds. And there's no required action if you are in agreement with their recommendation, which I will walk through right now. So approved with this year's budget was $20,000 designated for a Street Tree Replacement Pilot Program. In our justification, our being the staff reports and things that go to town administration so that they can weigh that into their budget request, the justification included a number of different project types in order to kind of fill out the pilot program side of that. Those project types included street tree infill projects, homeowner assistance, and the treatment of individual diseased trees. And I'll kind of go through what those mean more specifically on the next slide. The Tree Advisory Committee has recently made the recommendation to use all of the allotted $20,000 for a single program type. And we felt that since that was kind of a departure from previous conversations and maybe what had been brought before you, that we would bring it back and make sure that that was aligning with your vision for this program. And if you have questions about the TAC recommendation, we do have the TAC Chair, Rachel Woods, here tonight. So if you would like, we can call her up. In the meantime, I can run through the program types. So street tree infill, these would be larger-scale neighborhood, street improvements, where we basically knock out a stretch of street trees in one location or two locations, all kind of in one fell swoop. The second program type would be homeowner assistance. That would be individual replacement of trees within our residential neighborhoods, where a resident might submit an application, and we would work with them on getting a replacement tree or a new tree brought to them or reimburse them for installing one. The third program type would be the treatment of diseased trees. This was kind of the lowest on our pecking order, just because we wanted to kind of maximize the impact of those funds in the first year. So we wanted to actually get some trees in the ground. Maybe in the future, we can look at the treatment option. But for us, this was kind of the pecking order that we had established throughout our early discussions. And kind of going back, the TAC recommendation was just to go with the Street Tree Infill Program for this year and to maybe look at adding on to that in future years pending the relative success of this year's program. So if you'd like to hear from Rachel, we can call her up. Otherwise...
Would you? Yeah. Rachel?
Hello. I'm not used to speaking.
It's okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our justification for choosing one program over the three options we were provided. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, why, I guess. I'm just, yeah, could you tell me how you got there and why this is the best path forward?
Absolutely. There were actually several reasons and several conversations about this. For one, we felt that the neighborhood project of installing trees on a larger scale would be something that residents could really notice as a big, as a big achievement for having a Tree Advisory Committee. Why are we here? Why are we spending this money? Check out this street and what we're doing on this street. Trees provide a lot of services to the world, but to cities, they certainly impact crime rates, they impact home values, they decrease flooding, air improvement, water improvement. So it doesn't really matter where we plant the trees, the whole town will benefit. So that was one reason. Secondly, to split the money, while $20,000 is a lot of money, when it comes to planting a lot of trees in one neighborhood, it really isn't going to go as far, especially if we split it between programs. So we thought we could do more if we concentrated on one. Also, just trying to get everything organized to split our time and energy to make sure that each of these programs was going to be effective and something we could come back to you and say, we spent your money well, it is working. It just seemed like, under the short compressed time, it would be easier to concentrate on one than the other. It's also easier, I believe that the allotment was going to be for 75% of the $20,000 or $15,000 would be spent on a street tree infill, while 25% or $5,000 would be going towards residents requesting money to plant trees. It really, it would be really difficult to compare the results of those two programs when the money wasn't being spent evenly. So if we spend money evenly, maybe this year on one program and next year on another program, we can better compare apples to apples in the effectiveness, because we don't know what really is going to be effective for our town. We know what other towns are doing and how effective they are or their programs are. And these guys, Gina and Matt, have done an amazing job of considering what other towns are doing and how effective those programs are and whether we can implement those programs here in Holly Springs and make them work for our unique community. So it just, this stuff takes a lot of time. We loved the idea of residents requesting money to help them plant a street tree. However, getting the application just right, I know we can make an application, but can we make it right so it's fair for all? Do we reimburse money after they spend it? Do we just drop a tree off at their house and say, plant it? How does that work? Because again, different communities do it different ways. So what is the best way for our town and our employees and the staff and man-hours that we have? And so we just thought we needed more time to consider that. The initial plan was that we would reimburse $250. If a resident wanted to plant a street tree, we would reimburse $250 after you've proven that you planted it. However, the town mandates that a tree that you plant as a street tree be a fairly large tree, two inches diameter at breast height. And for an average homeowner to plant a tree of that size and it to successfully take and live for a long time, we were actually going to recommend that they hire somebody to do that. So the cost would actually be really, really high, and $250, while it sounds like a very generous reimbursement, might not go as far for all families. And it just didn't seem that it would be an equitable program for all residents. And so it just seemed like there were too many nuances that we couldn't really account for in short time. And so it seemed like the infill program was something we could really concentrate on, get a lot of bang for our buck, show the town that we are working, that this isn't anything, we're not throwing away money, we're not wasting your time, we're not wasting my time. So it just seemed like the way we wanted to go.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
I just wanted to compliment that the committee has so much information and knowledge, and you can tell when they come in, they really think things through. And it was really the best bang for the buck, but it was a thoughtful discussion with pros and cons and looking to see how can we, and there are so many areas of need to do just what we're doing here, that it's a great, great way to start. You know, because economic development as well, when you see areas of neighborhoods that have not really had a chance to do street trees and won't, I think this was a great way that they came to this conclusion, so.
And if I can add, if you don't mind, I drove through some of the neighborhoods that never had street trees planted, and some of the neighborhoods you drive through and you don't really notice it. And now that I'm aware of street trees, I can see that the trees are missing, but the homeowners have planted trees and shrubs, and the town, the neighborhood is maturing, so you don't really notice it. But you go to other neighborhoods in our town, and it feels very bare and very dry. And trees could really assist the aesthetics, but a lot more than that in a neighborhood. And I think we could really impact some neighborhoods in a really positive way, neighborhoods that don't necessarily get the attention, that some neighborhoods do, either because they don't have a really strong homeowners' association advocating for them. So I think this could be a really neat thing. I'm just really excited to see it go forward. So I'm excited to see what we can do with all of these programs, but in this year, I think if we can really focus our energy, and these guys have a lot to do, not just plant trees, so, or so I'm told, maybe they're just telling me that. Anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I do have one more question for staff and a few comments. Matt, do we, when we plant trees, do we have existing right-of-way or all the locations that were outlined in our packet, do we have right-of-way to go and plant those trees there? Or do we, would we have to acquire?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be going onto private property in any of these situations. We would be wanting to at least inform the HOAs if we're going to be going into a neighborhood to do something. You know, we don't want to go and put in something they don't want. So I think the next step for us would be reaching out to the HOAs in some of the locations that might have been picked out by the TAC and kind of see how feasible it is to kind of work with them and see if there, you know, are better times or if they want to actually come out and help support us and however they can, whether it's just, you know, clearing out debris or whatever, get some kind of partnership in there, probably not necessarily a financial partnership this year. But yeah, I mean, we would, we would be working on basically our property, but within the neighborhoods.
You're kind of talking like the devil's script, the Eastman. But the resident, wherever that tree is, will have to become responsible for that tree, whether they wanted it there or not.
Yes. So once, once the tree gets installed, then we're going back to the street tree maintenance requirements that we've recently adopted. And it would be kind of the breakdown of responsibilities as outlined in that document. So you would have kind of the closest adjacent property owners doing the majority of the maintenance, and the town can come in if something is growing too close into an intersection or light pole. But since it is something that we're controlling the location of, you're not going to have those instances of trees growing into an intersection or light pole or a stop sign or something like that, so.
And that's a, I mean, that's a good segue to some of the concerns that I had, you know. In that scenario, we're going into neighborhoods or places and planting street trees in places that don't exist today and people that have never had them before. Now they're going to have to maintain them according to our ordinance, and if it dies, it's on the homeowner or the HOA to enforce that homeowner replace that tree if it dies. Part of that is one of the reasons that I thought the pilot program of having the three buckets of spend is beneficial, because there are people that are going to get new trees that if something happens to that in its early stages and needs to be replaced, they may not have or may not want to come back and replant that tree according to our ordinance. Secondly, there's tons of HOAs and homes out there that aren't part of HOAs that have street trees, and if something happens to their tree and they don't have the funds, part of this program was to try and stimulate them to get some funding assistance to help. And I, you know, Ms. Woods, I completely understand, the committee's seven to eight people, right? This is a lot of work. It's not something that's going to change overnight. This is a marathon. It's not a sprint. We've got to get an application process correct. We've got to figure out how we're going to fund it, how we're going to reimburse people. I understand that. I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that there is a use and there is some benefit behind each of those two programs. So one for, you know, funding for residents, and then the third one, diseased trees. If you prevent them, like changing the oil in your car, if you prevent disease, then you have less dead trees that we have to pay for in the future. So I think there's some benefit to doing all three of these things. I don't necessarily disagree with the committee's recommendation, but I'd like to see some input or some continued discussion on how we can shape those other two in the future. If we're going to continue to fund this item year after year, how can we grow the program? You know, this is one step, but, you know, I kind of think there's a need for those other two, and we shouldn't completely move away from it.
Yeah. I'll add too, just briefly, that when this money was approved in the town budget, it was specifically for a tree, a street tree replacement pilot program, which I want that to be truthful to that designation and not just a tree planting program. But it's a pilot that I'd like to see explored in all those three buckets.
And the committee does value all three programs. It just seems like to get all three off the ground, it's just a lot of work in a short amount of time. We have a short period of time in which we can plant trees, and it's upon us. I mean, we need to get trees in the ground between end of October unless this heat keeps up. Maybe we have some time here. But, you know, we're looking at November to February, we have to get trees in the ground. And so we have to have action now, and we just don't have the time to implement all three. It's not that we don't want to take care of our diseased trees or don't value that people outside of neighborhoods would request help, but if we wanted to help those people, somehow we have to get out to the whole town, come apply for this program. There's going to be a quick turnaround. We're going to plant a tree. We only have a couple months. So the idea of concentrating on one was concentrating on one this year, seeing how well did it, did it go? Did it, was it worth it? What do we change next year? So it definitely, in our minds, was a pilot in the, in the absolute sense. But I think spreading our energies and the town's energies over three programs would almost ensure that none, none of it works, or it just wouldn't be as successful as if we just concentrated our energies in one, in one area. And we absolutely want to make it equitable. How do we reach the people who aren't going to read about this on Facebook? How are we going to help people who can't pay for the extra costs? And you're right, if a tree dies, if a street tree dies, the homeowner is responsible for replacement, which is why we want to contact the neighborhood in the first place and say, do you want these trees? This is going to be your responsibility moving forward, and just have to water it at this point. So they're not really liable for the, for the tree unless they do something actively to kill it. So, so we can, as part of our information to these neighborhoods, we can give them that information that you are now responsible for keeping these trees alive. Can you water them? But if we don't plant them now, we can't plant them in the spring, then they really need to be watered. We can't plant them in the summer. So we have to do it now. So there's a little bit of a time crunch on this also that we had to take into consideration, so.
And the other thing you didn't mention, there's a whole other education aspect to the committee that also looks at programs. So by the time we, next year, try helping individual owners, we'll have a toolkit to say, watch this video, this is what we can help you with, and we're just not organized on that side, too.
And so what, what are we going to have in place when we do plant these trees? And...
And you're right, if a tree dies, if a street tree dies, the homeowner is responsible for replacement, which is why we want to contact the neighborhood in the first place and say, do you want these trees? This is going to be your responsibility moving forward and just have to water it at this point. So they're not really liable for the, for the tree unless they do something actively to kill it. So, so we can, as part of our information to these neighborhoods, we can give them that information that you are now responsible for keeping these trees alive. Can you water them? But if we don't plant them now, we can't plant them in the spring, then they really need to be watered. We can't plant them in the summer. So we have to do it now. So there's a little bit of a time crunch on this also that we had to take into consideration. So.
And the other thing you didn't mention, there's a whole other education aspect to the committee that also looks at programs. So by the time we, next year, try helping individual owners, we'll have a toolkit to say, watch this video, this is what we can help you with. And we're just not organized on that side too. So.
And so what, what are we going to have in place when we do plant these trees and it doesn't take, something happens? Is there a timeframe where like a warranty for these homeowners? Because that's my, my concern a little bit is too, is all of a sudden these people are now going to have this responsibility. We've seen in the past where trees, once they get to a certain age or a certain height, I should say, sidewalks coming up and things like that. And I know with the type of trees we're choosing, we're trying to prevent that, but, but it's a big responsibility that these homeowners have not asked for before that now they're going to have. How are we going to deal with that?
I think Matt can speak to that, but I think, just very quickly, I think with the town planting the trees, we have know-how to be able to make sure that those issues don't come up, that we are putting in barriers so they don't rip up the cement. And, and I think when the town has control over planting, like in the infill project, that will actually be reduced, rather than us telling homeowners, go plant this tree and you're going to put it in sideways and the hole's not going to be big enough and you didn't amend the soil and you didn't put in the barriers and you're really unqualified to plant a big tree like this. There, there is some specific know-how. And I think if we move forward with the town doing it, we're going to eliminate some of those issues. So, but Matt might know more than I.
Yeah. So with, with regards to basically maintaining that, the tree for the first year, you know, that's, that's really, really important time for that tree in its life. So you have to, you know, you have to water it, you have to install it correctly. What we would look at in that situation would be having a contractor that would actually be doing installation. That way we can guarantee the, you know, best practices are being used. And when you do that, they, we wouldn't hire anybody that wouldn't, but they offer a one year warranty on that tree. So if it does die within the first 12 months, you get it replaced in the ground at their cost. That way we're not spending additional tax money going out and replacing a tree that we just put in. So I think that would be kind of the way of quelling that concern.
Okay, thank you. And there's more neighborhoods identified that we have money for.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
So if we find a neighborhood that wants to work with us.
Yeah.
You know?
I think that's, that's one of my fundamental problems is we have these neighborhoods that at the time of build, which could be decades ago, did not have trees on their plan or the developer did not follow the plan. They've had, there's been plenty of time to, to correct that. And it hasn't been corrected, but now the town wants to spend taxpayer money to essentially give trees to, you know, however we choose neighborhoods. I, I just, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that on a wide scale. There are a lot of areas that don't have trees. I don't know if they want them or not. Do we, how do we determine if they want them? Is the HOA the final say? If there's no HOA, does each individual neighbor? There's going to be a lot of haves and haves nots with that. How do you ensure that, you know, it's a slippery slope? If we do one section now, there's going to be an expectation that every other neighborhood who didn't get it this year is going to start getting it next year and we're going to have to plan a bit for that. So I'm just having a little, little trouble with that whole, whole concept.
Well, this is the first time that we're doing something like this. So it's kind of a pilot, kind of test, see if there's something that we move forward with in the future. So I hear you. But we're just getting our feet off the ground here and it's a pilot for us to see if it works.
Street tree replacement pilot program. That's, I guess fundamentally is what that money was approved for and sort of the initial, initial impetus for it and, and.
And as a pilot, why go full bore with the $20,000? We have, we have nine months left in the fiscal year, so I'd hate to see, you know, we can plant the trees, right? It's winter time, we plant the trees, then we get to March, April, and we have more time or the committee's looking at something else. There's no funding left until potentially July 1. So if, if we come back to like a 15, five number somehow, or you know, whatever, something, to leave something in the pot for the remaining nine months of the fiscal year, that there's still funds available if there's another program that the committee then has time to come back and put more thought into that lines up sort of to what the budget was presented as. So I'd be, you know, I, I think I'd be inclined to see something like that so we don't go fully into a planning program and then, you know, look at some way to keep something. And if we get to the end, then maybe we just roll that money to the next year's budget or we, we can figure it out in June, but.
And then we can go in forward, we could decide next year when it comes to budgets, what, if we see we need more, if we want to continue this way or if it needs to change.
I would, I'm sorry, Sharon.
No, go ahead.
I would actually argue that your point is true, whether we spend 75% of the money on this program or 100%. There's still going to be a neighborhood who feels like they were left out. There's still going to be individual homeowners who felt like their application was not processed fairly. So no matter what we do, and we're actually working on trying to get trees in parks. And if we pick one park and we don't pick another park, there's always going to be that argument. And that can't be an argument that we focus on. I mean, we try our best to be equitable and to consider every neighborhood who wants to participate. At the end of the day, we have to pick certain streets. And one of the ideas of the Tree Advisory Committee was that we pick thorough fares in that neighborhood. So it's not just the homeowners in that neighborhood who benefit, but anybody who drives through. And like I said before, people may not realize this. I'm not advocating for trees on my street, but I benefit for, no matter where trees are planted in Holly Springs, I personally benefit. My health, my well-being, property taxes or property values, crime in this, in the town of Holly Springs, I benefit from that. And that's part of our job as a committee, is to educate people about that. And that's, you know, you say, well, we have some money left over, let's spend it in spring or let's spend it in the summer. We would not be using your money properly if we planted trees next March or next April or next summer, because those trees are more likely to die. So we do have to spend this money now. We do have plans for educational programs moving forward and things that we can do when it's not planting season, including teaching residents how to care for their trees. So we do have plans in motion to do outside of the planting season. So I just think if we focus our efforts and admit that there will be faults and next year we'll need to make changes and we can totally reverse 180 degrees and do it differently and then we have two years to work from and compare from, I think we can make something neat, something valuable and something you'd be proud that you spent your money on and people around town will be, excuse me, proud of too. But it's just, we have to start somewhere and we've talked about this multiple times and we really felt that this was the best way to move forward.
I think no matter what we do, the communication's going to be key. As I look at Cassie, it's going to be key in this as we explain how we get to the point of which neighborhood or which tree, whatever, whatever we do. So that's going to be.
I mean, just that itself is hard and there's less neighborhoods. That that was what was overwhelming is like the, the individual program, the neighborhood program, because we want, you know, to be equitable. And so the passion that Rachel just said, all of them are that passion. It's an amazing committee, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Quick question for Matt, just as a matter of education. With that easement and devil's strip and so forth, if the house doesn't have any trees on there, is, can a homeowner just plant something there outside of HOA rules? Is there a town process, town rules? I'm just curious.
Yeah, they wouldn't be necessarily allowed to just go out and plant anything they wanted. I think we have left the door open to working with homeowners on planting appropriate street trees where none exists.
So it's kind of a particular zone where if you wanted to plant something there, you would need to follow town.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's town property, so you know, we would want to have a say in what's going on, on that property. So I'm, I'm.
I'm just curious, because there's always, there's always a lot of confusion about that little, that area.
Yeah, I think it would be a, kind of a case by case and we'd want to look at the, the situation and whether there's enough room for a tree to successfully kind of root out without damaging.
So the bottom line is, there should be some town oversight.
Yes.
If somebody wants to plant within that particular.
Yes.
Area.
Yeah, pretty much any activity that somebody's doing within that strip should have some type of oversight.
Okay.
Is that street in Windcrest the one that the HOA's contractor wiped out all the trees? I, I, it's not the same one? Okay.
I think that one just never had trees along that stretch.
Okay. Okay.
But they did, they did clean out the, the existing landscaping along that curve and up, up crossway.
Yeah. Can't remember the name. Forgot the street name, I knew.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
So are we?
There's no action.
What's the outcome? Did you guys still want to split it or go 100%?
I guess, that was just my question. I just wanted to clarify if your desire, go ahead and take the recommendation from the Tree Advisory Committee, or if what you approved in your adopted budget for FY '19 and '20 is what you prefer.
Speaking for myself, I feel like I need to be true to the, the money that we budgeted and, and the titling and, and kind of understanding of that money as a tree, street tree replacement pilot program. So I'd like, at a minimum, to maintain the, the split funds.
I think I'd, I think I'll hold to my comment earlier, going down to two buckets maybe, and then say we don't fund the disease program, but move that money into, move it into the tree planting. So take another thousand for 15 and five, I think I'd be okay with that. You know, part of the reason we have a tree committee is for these guys to go through, debate this stuff and come back with recommendations. So I appreciate the committee's work in coming up with this. I also appreciate the amount of work it's going to take to get this program off the ground. I think for me, I just, I'd like to see some measured results before that full investment. But if the pleasure of the board is to move forward with all 20, you know, so be it. And then I think my recourse would be to reevaluate next year in the budget, how we, you know, make sure we get all three of these off the ground the right way.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's a pilot. We really don't know. And we can reevaluate that next, next year. There, I'm sorry.
I said, since I was in those meetings and hearing the dialogue between the staff back and forth, I think even the staff recognized that, you know, there's value to this. So I, I support what the tree committee came up with.
So there's no motion.
Helps do a motion.
Yeah. Someone would have to, I can't.
All right.
Sharon, what did you?
Okay, so I, well, I, I'm, I could go either way, 15, five or the full 20. My concern isn't so much, I mean, I understand definitely where it's coming from.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I, we do need to figure out what we're going to do about replacing some of these trees. But I do like the idea of having something tangible, something we can see in this new program, you know, get these trees in and try them. My concern is the, how we're going to get homeowners, responsive homeowners, all of a sudden having to take care of these. I, I don't know how that's going to be and it's going to be very important, either way, you know, how we do this, that we communicate and we listen to them.
It, it was evident, there's a lot of work to get any program off the ground to be, I mean, that was the thing we were looking at and staff's time and what they can do. So that's where we ended, we, the committee ended up where they did. I was just there learning along the way. To be honest, they're so, they know their stuff, so.
So, I mean, I can make the motion to go with the recommendation of the Tree Committee to recommend 100% of the funds be allocated for street tree infill.
Need a second.
Second, I thought we don't need a motion if we're staying with what they recommended.
My advice is there's enough dissension here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, for the record, one nay and.
Two.
Two nays. And I'm, I'm in favor, so it would be three. Three, two. So the motion passes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
All right. Agenda item eight, consent agenda. I'm going to ask Councilman Lee for the motion on it.
Oh, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, this passes, great. Agenda nine A, new business. Major amendment to Development Plan 10-DP-06-A007, UNC Rex Healthcare Master Sign Plan. And that is going to be Beth Trous, planning. Thank you.
Good evening. The purpose tonight is to present to you a request for a master sign plan and associated waivers to improve the directional signage around the UNC Rex campus. We're going to ask for you tonight to consider an adoption of Resolution 1926 to make and accept the findings of fact and to consider the waivers and to approve the Unified Development Ordinance waivers. Consider a motion to approve or deny the Development Plan major amendment to add to it the UNC Rex Healthcare Master Sign Plan. Located at 850 South Main Street along the GBL Florida Highway and Avant Ferry Road in the ORCU Office Research and Development Park District is the hospital. You've seen it before. The purpose of master sign plans is to help improve the overall site plan signage, cohesive look. You can also take excess signage from different parts of the, the site and apply it to areas that need improved signage for vehicles, pedestrians. Incidental signs at the hospital are very small by right, so they have requested two waivers. They'd like to take the unused square footage from the south portion of the building and apply it to the two waivers. The first waiver they're requesting is to increase the overhaul, overall site of the signs from an allowable two feet to six feet and then to increase the maximum square footage for the incidental signs from three square feet to 24 square feet. This is what is typically allowable by right. It's the three feet in height and two square feet. UNC Rex is providing with the incidental sign waivers, a maximum height of six feet and 24 square feet for two large directional signs and two entrance directories. And then they have 10 smaller signs that will be a maximum height of three feet, six inches and a maximum square feet of six. All the signs for the directionals are located internal to the site. Called it out, it's a little hard to see on your plan. Here are the four larger signs, two of them are directionals and two of them are entrance directories. And then they have 10 of the smaller signs located throughout the parking areas and along the major drive to direct you to the hospital. At the planning board, they had no discussion on the item and they voted to unanimously approve the agenda item.
Okay, great.
The applicant is here if you have any questions.
Anybody have questions? You want them to come up? No?
I don't have.
Feedback from, do you?
I don't.
Chris, anything from Chris on the board? Okay. We don't need anyone to come up. So we do have two motions. First one.
Motion to adopt Resolution 19-26 to make and accept findings of fact for consideration of and to approve the Unified Development Ordinance waivers.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Next motion?
Motion, go ahead. You got it. Motion to approve Development Plan major amendment 10-DP-06-A07 to add UNC Rex Healthcare Master Sign Plan with the conditions in the agenda packet.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Okay, next agenda on the, Agenda 9B, our Bass Lake Stream Restoration, and that would be Ms. Kendra Parrish from our engineering department.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So what's before us tonight is to outline the second phase of the Bass Lake Stream Channel Restoration Project. And what will be considered tonight is a motion to approve the project budget and the total amount of $920,480. Also to award the Bass Lake Stream Restoration Construction Contract to Fluvial Solutions for $836,800. And then a motion to appropriate a total of $920,480 from Parks and Rec Reserves and then putting that into the two project accounts that are listed. So as we may recall, this was a picture of Bass Lake during Hurricane Matthew. So as we may recall, this was a picture of Bass Lake during Hurricane Matthew. And just to refresh our memory of the damage that was done.
You could take a surf, surfboard on. I was there that day.
I know, I was too.
Did you see the video?
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
I took my own video.
Yeah.
Mine had talking.
Yep.
So. So just a little background from the video. First, I want to recognize Carolyn Couch from our Parks and Rec Department. She is our manager at Bass Lake. And when the initial damage had happened, she was the one that met and really gathered all the information. And we were able to obtain FEMA reimbursement for this project. Once the project went into design towards construction is when the engineering department assist Parks and Rec, they're the owner, we're their engineer, and took this project moving forward. So I just, I do want to recognize Carolyn and the great work that she's done. She did the hard part. So since that time of October 2016, like I said, there was a lot of time spent in the documentation and obtaining the FEMA reimbursements. A few other things, we had, there was a consultant selection for the design of the parking lot as well as what's before you tonight. And during the design of what's before you tonight, the actual stream restoration, there was permitting that was involved. And during that permitting process, we ran into some delays with the dam structure and what dam safety wanted to see going forward within five years of the project, which that, you know, as I said, created that time delay. Once we had the plans ready for advertisement and bid, this is a little bit of a specialty construction project, and a lot of those contractors were down east doing similar projects on hurricane damage. We actually had to advertise the project three different times before we obtained one bidder. That took some time, but fortunately for us, the one bidder came very highly recommended, and they were very close to what the engineer's estimate was. The scope of the work that will be included is stream restoration, installation of the gabion walls, and velocity dissipators, and as well as reestablishing the trail connection, which is very critical for our citizens. We'll be looking forward to that. July 31st was the bid opening. And we're calling this phase two because, as you recall, the contractor for the parking lot construction has already been awarded. But we're waiting for this work, phase two, to be done so that the equipment doesn't mess up the parking lot. So we'll do the stream restoration. This is a little bit of a schematic. Bass Lake Road is up here. This is the spillway. This is the parking lot. So what we'll do, what the contractor will do, is coming in and putting the gabion walls. That provides more stability and a hardened structure to protect the parking lot. And then for velocity dissipation, basically just slowing down the water, we've got these areas of large boulders that will be established along, as well as the, this is the pedestrian bridge that the town put in a few years ago. And then here is the reestablishment of the trail. Once this work is finished, then the parking lot will be finished. So that's phase one and phase two. What we also wanted you to be aware of is what we're calling phase three, is what was identified during the permitting process through dam safety, will be another project coming before you. And it will be looking at design or making improvements to the dam structure itself to increase the storm that can be held by Bass Lake. If you recall, this is the, I think, the second time this has happened to the parking lot. And anytime we have those big storms where it can be eight inches or more, this is what occurs. And so what we want to do going forward, and as part of phase three, is make some further improvements to reduce the likelihood of flooding in the future. We, we can't say that it will never flood. We could have a huge storm that floods, but it will at least increase the capacity of the lake and reduce the flooding amount for the, the money that we're spending. So, these are the motions. And I do want to note that while we are taking money from the Parks and Rec Reserves, that when FEMA reimburses us, which Carolyn continues to help us with that reimbursement, that money will be replenished into the Parks and Rec Reserves. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
How long do you think that will take?
So by the contract, they have to be substantially complete within 150 days, which is in March, estimated to be around in March. And then they have four additional months to do the plantings, because there's lots of specialized plantings and stabilization. They have a little bit longer for that, depending on the, the weather and stuff. We don't want to force them to put it in too soon when it's too cold for it.
And when would we expect the FEMA reimbursement?
So we've received a little bit of the FEMA reimbursement already. But as we do the project and we pay the contractor, we then go through the reimbursement process, which I think is a couple of months.
Okay, so it's a continuous?
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah.
But we don't have to wait for it to be all done and do, here's a big bill. They, they'll give us money as we, okay.
Okay.
And Mayor Protam and Council, just to clarify to you, that's 100% reimbursement?
That was going to be my question. So they're, they're going to pay the total amount for the whole project, correct?
That is expected, yes. The initial amount that FEMA had committed to you was 801,000, I think. But since that time, you know, this, a little bit of the escalation that we've experienced is not unheard of to them. They're seeing that. And so there's been conversations, and we feel certain that they will increase that to 100% as well.
The other phase that you talked about, is that also going to be covered by FEMA or something we'll have to?
No. So that is a little bit of an upgrade. We might, can try for a FEMA reimbursement once we have the scope of that. I'm not sure what the parameters are for that. But that is something that we are going above and beyond to protect the investment. It just, it seems, you know, to, to get the FEMA money, they're just pretty much letting you get back to where you were. But we would like to, to do a little bit more so that we don't have to have this happen so often. The only, I mean, during phase three, we may have to shut the trail down again. So, but we'll, we're, we're a ways away from that. So I think there will be a period of time where the trail is open, our citizens are using it. And then when we come back for phase three, there might be a little bit of downtime there. But of course, we'll be coming back before board and working with our communications and marketing department to get that word out. But I just, I do want to say that because that is, you know, something we'll, we'll get the information out when we know more about that.
Do you have any timeframes in terms of when this will be constructed?
So the phase two that's before you tonight, if it's awarded to Fluvial Solutions, they have 150 days to do substantial, and then 270 days for total completion of the plantings. So we're looking at by July total, but you know, the, the path, the trail will probably be open sometime around the April timeframe. But we, as construction starts, we can update you on that more. And then phase three has to be within five years. We're already probably months into that. So within four years, we'll need to undertake phase three.
Okay.
At least it's during the winter with a little bit less traffic that it will be closed.
True.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, and the bridge will remain open. What's there today is just the section that's already closed will remain closed. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Any questions?
Just to make sure I'm correct here, the funding for phase three is not included in this request. That'll be separate and later?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Interesting IP.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. There's no further questions. We've got three motions. First one?
Motion to approve project budget in the amount of $920,480 for the Bass Lake Stream Restoration.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Number two?
Motion to award the Bass Lake Stream Restoration Construction Contract for repair and improvements to Bass Lake to Fluvial Solutions for $836,800.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Number three?
Motion to appropriate $920,480 from Parks and Rec Reserves, 21.95, 836,800 to Bass Lake Stream Restoration Project Professional Services, 49-908, 12.05, and $83,680 to Bass Lake Stream Restoration Project Contingency, 49 point, or dash 908, 82 dash, or point 97.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
When is Bass Lake Day again?
This weekend. Bass Lake Day.
We got some good news. Great. Thank you so much. So we will go to agenda 10A, which is unfinished business, which is nineteen dash CPA dash zero one, Vision Holly Springs Land Use and Character. And that would be Ms. Melissa Sigman.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and Council.
Thank you.
So this is probably a familiar item. From your second meeting in September, we did start the discussion. So this evening, the intent of this evening is to continue that discussion. So to review the revised draft of the land use plan. In terms of requested action, we're looking to determine council's readiness to either adopt the plan and/or to, or to continue further discussion at a later date, potentially your next meeting on October 15th. So to remind folks who may not have been here for the last discussion, we have the land use plan to guide policy decisions on land use and development, the look and field of new development and redevelopment in the town, provide strategic planning, and as well capital investment, and inform how and where we would spend money on infrastructure in the future. We're updating the plan to reflect our current population and changes to our, our town in both the development that's occurred, the many uses we have here, and things that are in town that we didn't have back in 2007, as well as through our extensive community engagement program that we've identified the community's current values and vision, and want to reflect those with our plan. So as, as you remember, we are nearing the end of the about year-long process. So we're right here in the adoption and having those final conversations with council. So for this evening, we would like to, as I mentioned, let you as a group discuss, continue any conversations you have regarding the draft plan. With that, if there are further questions or concerns that need to be addressed by the consultant team who has prepared the plan, we do have the consultant available to attend a council meeting. At this point, he would be available for the October 15th or a later date at your discretion. So we can get any guidance from you if there's anything that you need at this point.
First, are there any questions for Melissa right now? No? What about the consultant? Do you guys have any questions for him and the team, by any chance? You look like.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm willing to, you know, we can discuss, and then we can come back to that and see, right? I mean, I had the opportunity. So first off, let me, let me say a couple of things. So I, whether or not it was for my benefit, I appreciate you all letting me come back with some comments. I know I had passed that feedback on to everyone and followed up with some, some bullet points through email to get us to this point. And then I also had the opportunity to sit down with the planning staff and Scott Chase and go through some of the, the comments that I had and discuss that, get staff's input and everything. So I've done some background diligence to get to this point. A lot of my questions have been answered. I think there's a couple of things we should consider. The first thing is, you know, the consultants had a lot of input into this plan. And as we see this future land use map, 95% of what we see is basically the consultant handing that to us, handing it to staff who's looked at it, corrected some, you know, topographical errors or typographical errors in the document itself. And then, you know, the map is largely the consultant's recommendation. Staff made some tweaks, but not wholesale tweaks based on, you know, anything I put in writing or we've discussed or anyone else. So if, if there's consensus amongst the group that we want to hear from the consultant as to why some of these designations are what they are, perhaps it makes sense to bring him back and have him do that, since this is largely their piece of work. But I'm willing to go through some of the points that I have. And if, you know, if the, the board wants to move forward with a, you know, a decision on this tonight, then so be it. But, you know, I can go through my piece and then whatever we want to talk about. And if we want to come back next time, we can talk about that, too.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm curious of the, because we're seeing some, some homeowners come through with our landowners with some issues that this is causing. I'm curious to see what our process is. Once we adopt it, even though it's a living document, the impact that this will have on, on folks day one, and what's the process for them to either hear how we're changing things or, you know, because there's going to be a gap between when we adopt this plan to when we really look at the UDOs. And I just want to make sure that, that we have the best process in place to, to work with those owners.
Sure, I could speak to that if, if you'd like. So as far as, quite honestly, for the average homeowner, they most likely won't see any change immediately. This is a long-term vision. And so many of the things that would be implemented by this plan will be over the long haul, over the five, 10-year period. So day one, most folks will not experience a direct impact. The folks who may have an impact or who would recognize a change would be those who are looking and asking the town to do some type of development activity on their property. So if someone wants to rezone their property, for instance, the, looking at the land use plan is the first thing we would do to see if it, if what they're requesting is compatible. And that's part of their application process. One of the things with North Carolina is it does give the town council the, basically it is your prerogative if you approve any rezoning. So regardless of whether the, if someone requests to rezone their property, regardless of whether it's in conformance with the land use plan or not, you have that right. And so you would be able to look on that particular situation and determine if perhaps the map was not the best land use listed, or if some situation like that occurred. So you'd still have that opportunity, whether, you know, regardless of what color is on the map today. So that is open to you at all times.
Okay. So do you want to bring back the consultant October 15th for questions? Is that what?
I'm, because of what you just said, I mean, I think I'm, I looked at it, I'm, I'm happy with us moving forward, but only with respect to my other council people that they, they feel comfortable to.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know what, I don't know that he'd answer me. He'd be able to explain why they did what they did, right? So as I sit here now, I don't have a full understanding of why this looks the way it does in some of the areas that I'm concerned about. So I'm happy to discuss those areas and why I'm concerned. And if there's concurrence that someone else is concerned as well, maybe we think about having staff present a different alternative and have the consultant come back next time and explain why it is the way it is. The, the large part of my concern at this point is in the southern area of town, an area that a year ago, we spent a lot of time, this council going through the SAPI plan and looking at future land use designations on a parcel-by-parcel basis to, to determine it. And at that time, in a sense, we throttled sort of what could have happened in that area based on the 2007 plan and replaced it with the SAPI plan to get us to this point where we've had an opportunity to bridge into this and let the consultant team and staff do their work to get us here. And I also think that this council's done a fantastic job implementing a five-year cycle of how often we're going to update these plans. We shouldn't have to operate off of 12-year-old plans. And moving forward with this being the first one, parks next, transportation after that, we'll no longer have to do that. So there's, there's good work here. We're moving in the right direction. I just feel, I'm a little concerned that out of all of the developable land that remains left in town, most of it is all in the southwest area of town. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. That's where most of the, the farmland is, where a lot of development activity is occurring. And the SAPI plan went to a different, lower-density type of development. Now, in this character element, we're moving away from density and into character. I understand that. And I understand we're trying to drive more diverse housing types within those character areas. But I also think that the mixed residential designation presents some, some challenges and a lack of transition between other residential areas that are already there. If you look at the logging road parcels, for example, on, off Event Ferry Road between Morgan Park and Holly Glen. If you look at the logging road parcels, for example, on, off Event Ferry Road between Morgan Park and Holly Glen, there's residential all around there at varying densities. And then in the middle, you have a mixed component where the plan says we should have more than one housing type contained on that parcel. And I'm not clear as to the consultant's interpretation or definition of a clear transition between existing areas of residential development and why mixed residential in between those two areas makes the most amount of sense from a plan perspective. Now, there is a neighborhood center designation there and some intensity around that could be expected because it's, you know, you have people walking, biking, driving to the neighborhood center to get their groceries, dry cleaning, what have you. So around those areas that are in pink, I could certainly understand a lot of the brown. But in some of the other areas, as you move farther to the south and the west, those are mainly farms that are still two-lane rural roads out there. And saying that we want to have mixed uses or mixed housing types on all of their remaining land, I just feel like we're trying to make up for the sins of the past. There's a bunch of islands out there that aren't connected, that have no ability to walk or bike to get anywhere. It's all vehicle-dependent. And now we're saying we want to have all these different housing types to make up for it. But there's a lack of infrastructure there and yes, development will help us make up for some of that. But I'm concerned about what the mixed residential designation actually means in some of the projects that we could potentially see all over that area when in the rest of town, there's really not much more developable land. And if there is, it's not the light brown color. So I'm just concerned as to why all of that is concentrated in one area.
Good points. With those types of questions, we probably should bring back the consultant, to be honest with you. And that would be my recommendation because I want to make sure we're getting it right. We have an opportunity here. Yes, as the, as time evolves, we can tweak this plan. But initially, I want to make sure we get this right. And Councilman Berry has some good questions and concerns. My recommendation is that we bring the consultant back to the October fifteenth meeting and for us to ask these types of questions to them.
And share Councilman Berry's questions with them because that's, we seem to have brought this question before to them along with a lot of the build-out that they're presenting in here. I think we need just a little more clarification.
So if we can get just a little clarification, I think there was a comment from Councilmember Berry in terms of having alternatives for the fifteenth. If that is something that the council would like to see, so we could understand exactly what's desired or what type of information we can have the consultant present in addition to having, being able to describe the benefits of the land uses as shown on the plan or in the current arrangement. So as far as an alternative, is that something that you're thinking of?
Yeah, I only mention that because when we set off on this project, there was a sort of a timeline, right? And we wanted to, maybe it was October one, maybe it was the end of October. But there was some, you know, timeline that we wanted to wrap this up. And I'm completely sensitive to that and I think we should do that before the end of October. Where, you know, if we can get the consultant back here on the fifteenth and take action that night, I think would probably be preferable, given the timeline and, you know, where we are at in the calendar year. I would be willing to look at some additional potential, you know, could we increase some, or could we use some other transition methods around, you know, maintaining some of the brown where it makes sense on neighborhood centers and areas that are calling for a more intense and dense use. But are there other pockets where carrying through some of the yellow residential, single-family neighborhoods still makes sense? I'm just not clear on how they differentiated some of these parcels. And, you know, to the far southwest, all of that is our short-range area down by the lake, basically. That stuff's not going to be developed for like twenty years, if ever, as far away from town utilities as it is. And, you know, so calling that yellow is a little bit disingenuous in a way because development out there is unlikely, in my humble opinion. But having some other yellow sprinkled in and seeing that transition between designations, I think would be beneficial to me, whether the consultant can do that and come back on the fifteenth with an option, you know, that would be great.
So in terms of guidance, as far as how they would choose where to locate additional residential neighborhoods instead of mixed residential neighborhoods, would you like them to suggest alternatives? Or would you, are there properties that council would like to provide feedback to staff? You know, perhaps following the meeting through correspondence in terms of the areas, specific areas of concern? Just to make sure that we direct the consultant appropriately?
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to provide some ideas of parcels, you know, but I'm also open to their recommendations, you know. Hearing what I've said, if they're able to then consider what their definition of transition is and what mine is, based on my comments, can they come back with something? And I'm happy to throw some suggestions out there.
Okay.
Just as a point of clarification, none of these areas, residential neighborhood, mixed residential neighborhood, have any kind of density attached to that, any specific density?
Correct, so not in the land use plan.
Right. It may encourage a little bit based on some of the description, but there isn't necessarily a
Correct.
A density component to these.
Right, so through the zoning process, council would still have the ability to discuss density and provide guidance to the development community?
If I may, Councilman Vilson, I hear your point and I agree, right? Where we are trying to move from a density evaluation to a character evaluation, which will give us much more of that unique feel that we're striving to get in these projects. There's going to be some time to get there, but when you have, when you have that timing, I think there's, that's my concern. And I also feel like I want to have a plan that I know I can support. And by seeing this with so much mixed around there, I feel it's disingenuous to put to the development community that, hey, this is all mixed residential. We're encouraging you to come and apply for multiple housing types and then get to a rezoning case where we say, nah, it doesn't make sense because you have mixed housing types and in that area, it doesn't make sense. So if there's pockets that we know we would not support a mix of housing types, I think this is the time to drill in at a parcel level and say, that's not going to make sense there. Let's get it right on the plan and be upfront about it rather than have the development community come here and just say no to everything, right? That's how I'm approaching this and how I arrived at, you know, at my comments. But I completely agree with what we're trying to do as a body in moving to a character evaluation. Personally, it will take me some time to transition from density because that's, I've spent way too much time drilling in on densities, but...
That's what we've been always thinking, density, numbers, numbers. And now it's, you know, we're kind of like changing how we do business here. And it's going to be a challenge to adapt. But like I said before, I think we want to make sure we're doing this right. And I think if we can bring back the consultant to address any questions, concerns for October fifteenth, I think that would be advantageous for everyone here. Sound good? You all agree?
Fine by me. Just one quick clarification on the map. Isn't there, I guess what would be called a residential neighborhood between Rouse and Honeycutt on Cass Halt? That's just north of that.
Steeplechase?
Yeah, Steeplechase. That's not, that's on Cass Halt. That's not on the map there. Just another, just to go to your point, another sort of island of yellow and the mixed use.
Councilmember Vilson, that is correct, that there is an existing neighborhood. So while the majority of developed neighborhoods, the intent was to closely match to them, there were, there are some where it is still trying to create somewhat of a broad brush instead of getting too speckled.
Okay. So I guess we're going to have to table this, correct?
The second one to continue.
The second one. So, need a motion, please?
Okay. Okay, motion to continue nineteen dash CPA dash zero one, Vision Holly Springs, Town of Holly Springs Comprehensive Plan Section One, Land Use and Character to the October fifteenth, twenty nineteen Town Council Meeting.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. And we will move to Agenda Item Ten B, Holly Springs Road Widening Phase One Appraisals. And that would be John Chifano, our town attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem O'Brien. I was asked to put this presentation together to you for the workshop. And we sort of ran out of time with the workshops. So I'm going to run through it, hopefully not too quickly. But in the end, what we're here for today is to seek about eighty thousand dollars to put in the kitty for appraisals for properties, about thirty-two properties on Holly Springs Road. And I'll explain to you our logic and how to spend that money. But I'd also like to back up and give just maybe a general overview of our real estate acquisition process, maybe to set some context here briefly. So you've heard from the DOT previously and they gave a much better eloquent speech than I'll give. But our methodology is the same. We pay fair market value for the interest that we need to acquire in the real estate. And I'm sorry, this mouse is going everywhere. I don't mean to do that. So the fair market value is just defined by law as the price a willing buyer will buy when not compelled to do so and the price a willing seller will sell when not compelled to do so. So it's, in the case of a engineering project, that is a fictional piece of information that we rely on experts to give us. So we need, we need to hire state-licensed appraisers for any interest in land that we think is going to be in excess of ten thousand dollars. And those experts will use two different valuation methods in this type of thing. And they'll look at the value of land in the before condition, what is it right now? And the value of the, value of the land or the property in the after condition, after the road's built and widened and such. And then the town needs to pay the difference between that. Or they will take the per-square-foot value of land. Maybe we're taking a third of an acre or so, ten thousand square feet or so. And they'll say that that's thirty-three dollars a foot or whatever the number they come up with and therefore we owe thirty thousand dollars. They do through this process and look at comparable sales analysis, income capitalization approach and replacement value. It's, comparable sales analysis is what we all, what we all do when we go out and buy a house. We just look at what other houses are selling for. We, the town takes a variety of different interests. Could be a right-of-way interest, which is the right foot of road or sidewalk on somebody's property. And that's, in essence, the full, what we call the full fee amount, the full amount of the, all the interest in the land. Or we may take something less, like a drainage easement, a slope easement, a utility easement, conservation easement, or a temporary construction easement. There are, there's varying degrees of thought onto what percentage you would take in an easement when you're taking less than the full interest of the land. Are you taking fifty percent of it, seventy percent, ninety percent? And different appraisers will, will come up to things differently. So, you know, I just want to sort of run through what our process is in real estate acquisition. You know, the first thing we do is establish the project limits. Engineering does that for us. And in this particular case with Holly Springs Road, we advertised that project and held some open houses and sent out letters and interest cards and obtained some phone numbers and emails from people that came to our interest meetings. We notified, notified the landowners thirty days in advance for, in case we needed to be on their property for surveying or engineering field visits. The next thing is we hire a consultant to design construction documents. You know, those are the nuts and bolts. Identify environmental, social justice or historical impacts. And then the, at some point, the final design will be done in which the town approves that. And then we charge the consultants to prepare plaques. And plaques are the very specific property-by-property documents that get to the very nuts and bolts of what we're taking, what we need, the legal interest that the town needs for each parcel. And that's, that's when really the work begins in the legal department's bailiwick to contact landowners and, you know, request any information they have, set up meetings. And then also at this stage, we would look for appraisals, look to start the appraisal process because it's at that point we know what the town needs. Now, the problem with a good economy is appraisers are busy and that does take a long time. It's about a four to six weeks process for appraisers. Once an appraisal comes back, we'll approach you with a authorization to spend that money. And we typically do that in closed session because everybody's property is different and everybody's property has different interests. And we might be taking a fee value in one and a partial interest in another, even though they're neighbors and everybody's, you know, gets their feelings hurt sometimes, you know. But we do treat everybody the same in that we pay fair market value that's indicated by a licensed real estate appraiser. And then we prepare and make the offer to the property owner. And that second-to-last bullet, I think, is where the nuts and bolts, where success is measured, is how much time we can give a landowner to chew on and just, and understand the offer that we have for them. It's been my experience over the last sixteen years that the longer we can stretch that out, the more successful we are. But yet, we're under the pressure to get the project done, right? I mean, it's, we have plans, we have the offer, everybody's made everything. Why aren't, why aren't the orange cones out there? Why aren't we doing what we're doing? If we extend that second-to-last bullet and give people more time to be able to make an informed decision on whether or not the town's fair market value is accurate or not, it's been my experience, the success rate goes through the roof. If I give somebody two weeks to discuss an offer, take it or leave it in two weeks, I can almost guarantee that we're not going to be a very successful involuntary acquisition. And then if we're not successful, I think we all know that the town has the right to exercise eminent domain, which is, you know, what I consider a personal failure and, you know, something that we need to do in order to keep the project going. But that, if we do exercise eminent domain, as Mr. Jernigan talked to you before, that doesn't mean we, everybody goes into their battle corners and goes home. There's still very much opportunity to settle the matter and it's a much more structured settlement at that, at that point. And in the eminent domain, that's where lawyers get very busy through a regular civil law process and a more or less regimented process. So generally where we're at with the Holly Springs Phase One is I just took all those bullets and tried to put them on one slide. And I don't expect anybody to have to reread them, but we're in about the first trimester there. Give you any...
What?
We're in the, we're in the very first part and we're at the design construction documents are set to be delivered. And we're at the point where we need to start lining up appraisers. We've got thirty-six identified parcels, five structures with some what I will call high impact. They're going to require either structural relocation or demolition. The total estimated area is about maybe three acres, sixty-three thousand square feet of new right-of-way. Permanent drainage easements, permanent utility easements and a lot of temporary construction easements. A temporary construction easement is just our right to use the property during the time. And I'll just run through those five parcels at one forty-four Holly Springs Road. You know, you can see that, we'd be able to see from the plat when we get the plat that it will, this widening will present a pretty serious impact to the, to the structure as far as proximity. Along with one fifty-two Holly Springs Road, that will be the same. This was in the early two thousands, my old law office at two thousand and one, two thousand and one Holly Springs Road. And that will have a high impact as well. It's a commercial property. Of the five, it's the only commercial property. Ms. Morton, who was a council member many years back, property as well will have a pretty high impact. And then the last, but certainly not least, is Mr. and Mrs. Attwater on that property. So what our strategy would be would, and also I prepared a slide on, you know, the town would offer relocation assistance and the NC DOT has, you know, some very stringent guidance or very complete guidance documents on what that would be and how much money people who have been in these locations for more than ninety days, which all of those five have. have, would be entitled to. So, you know, and there's been talk with some of the owners preliminarily about house moving. It wouldn't change the fair market value analysis. The town would pay what the fair market value of the tape would be. However, we can come back to you when we get a little bit more detail on what the town can offer. There might be some soft things the town can offer as far as relocating taps and, you know, those types of things. So our next steps here, what we really need to do to stay on track is to obtain $80,000 from you. We're not going to spend that all at once. My recommendation is to take those five high-impact properties and look at them, and then we're going to take the, have them appraised by different appraisers, so that there's some blindness there as far as scientific method. And then we're going to look at what the land or the dirt value is and maybe extrapolate that out. And then we're going to approach NC DOT with some requests for additional money, as we believe engineering's talked about previously. So what I'm here to do is to beg for you to set aside $80,000 to obtain the appraisals. And as I said, you know, it's not something I'm going to spend all at once, but spend it out throughout the course of the project.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
I have a couple of questions, John. In that long process, where is it, because it seems to be, there's the machine and then all of a sudden folks see a number. Where are the discussions where we talk about, you know, this is going to impact my fence or my driveway is going to be different, or these are champion trees that I'll lose? Where is that taken into account?
Sure. So I did have, you know, even prior, once the final design is done and we get the plaques, then you're looking at an aerial view of your property or somebody's property, and it shows what's on the ground as far as the house and the structure, as opposed to, and I probably could have given some visuals, as opposed to a construction drawing that has, it looks like a spaghetti model of a hurricane. There's so much on there and then, but the plat really looks, and it has halls and distances and feet, and it'll show the driveway entrance point and all of that information. We would take that and then, you know, also, you know, send it to the landowner and say this is what we have to do, send it to them in writing. And then we're going to also request any special information that you need, such as historical information that we may not have, that may not be on the public record, champion tree, you know, anything you have that you want us to take into consideration, please give it to us. And then, you know, it's at that time, the appraisers are still going on in that four to six week time period where we're waiting for the appraiser to do his or her work. And then once that comes down, usually the appraisal is a large document with pictures and graphs and all the very specific data on your property. It would have that historical information or the champion tree, or we're impacting many trees. And appraisers will take that into consideration. They do put a value on shrubbery and tree loss and stuff like that. It's then after that, we'll meet with the landowner and talk about what the town will do. And I'm missing a step there, is coming back to you for the authority. I can't go out and spend money and buy property without your authority, so.
Any other questions, concerns?
Just a comment. I know September was a little crazy for me, but I missed the workshop as well, and I had a chance to talk to Mr. Harrington about engineering's proposal on the funding and how we were going to make all this work from a street reserves perspective. So I'm supportive of what we're going to do there, and I think we can get where we need to go with street reserves for the projects that you all discussed on September 10th, so.
Yeah, I mean, this will give us the opportunity to leverage and go back to the DOT, because this project's going to cost more than $2 million, as we all know. But we've got to have all the right information on, you know, land acquisition and the cost for that and then the actual construction. So this is just a piece of the process here, so I agree.
I'll just put a plea in for the residents. Most of them have been there for a long time. This is where they grew up, this is where the parents have gone home. So there's sensitivity to the families here. And so I just want to make sure that we have that amount of compassion to talk through, and it might be sitting down and hearing, it's not just, you know, here you go. I would like to see some kid glove treatment, because to help folks realize these are things we need to do and a treated respect. The tax values are obviously not at all what the land is worth today, so.
That's just the land, right? That the tax value.
The tax value is actually just the structure.
Just the structure.
And that's just to show you exactly what was said, that's not the fair market.
Right. Because as I was going to go.
The times the fair market value is, or the tax value is pretty close to fair market value, and then these five examples, it's not.
Not at all, yeah. So I didn't want anybody else to have an expectation to say that's going to be, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. All right. There's no other questions or concerns? I believe we have a motion.
Motion to authorize an expenditure of $80,000 to obtain appraisals for properties impacted by the Holly Springs Road widening Phase One.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, none opposed. And that is it for tonight in terms of agenda items. Let's go to other business. Does anybody have any other business?
I have a couple of things. One, in the spirit of October being Awareness Month, it is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and there's quite a few folks in my friends and family that have been struggling with breast cancer, so I just want to make sure that, and I'm wearing pink, so are you, Dan. That's fantastic.
Carrie Underwood's concert opened up with the big.
With the thing.
Last night.
Right. I also wanted to point out that tonight is the end of Rosh Hashanah, which is the New Year for the Jewish faith. So I wanted to send my wishes for New Year's to be sweetened with happiness to all of those. And October 9th is Yom Kippur, which is wishing people peace and goodness. So those are kind of the big holidays. Did get to tour the temple with the Mormons, which was really impressive. So I appreciate folks reaching out to us and giving us an opportunity to see their different special places.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I was wondering if I could bring up with Kendra about West Holly Springs Road, and we've heard some concerns.
Yes.
About not being able to take left. Can you give us any information? I was trying to find the original plans from a while back that showed no left turn all the way that far down. Any changes, things like that?
Yes, I can give you an update. So back in 2010, when, oh, let me back up before that. In the early 2000s is when it was determined that West Holly Springs Road would be a future four-lane median divided roadway. And at that time, you know, medians were never popular, but they provide a lot of access control, which raises the capacity of the road. And it's also safety related, where you don't have conflicting left turns close to the intersection. When I first started here, we had Main Street and Holly Springs Road without any medians, and turning in and out of the Texaco at the time would break down that intersection, because there was no access control. Similar at Sunset Lake Road and Holly Springs Road, the town did that capital project. We installed medians, and at the time, it was great heartburn. But we moved past it, and if you look at roads around other municipalities, medians are better for the vehicular movements. So that was decided a while, a long time ago. In 2010, when Little Pros, the plan was approved, it was noted on the plan at the time that it was, the driveway entrance, it was a temporary full-access driveway, and that, at which time the road, Holly Springs Road, was widened to its ultimate median-divided cross-section, the driveway would become a right-in, right-out. So it was always anticipated, and the developer, who is still the current owner of the daycare facility, was, you know, had that understanding. So with the Downton road plans, as you remember, they came in and they were going to be widening that north side of Holly Springs Road and installing the median. And we had a lot of conversation about at Tulic Way and, you know, what that was going to create for those residents. And so at that time, if you recall, it was, you know, discussed, I think they met with each of the council members at that time, and they ended up building the new road that extends over towards the west that will have a full access opening. That road's under construction now. But that connection was required by council on the development plan. It was not offered by the applicant for a very long time. That is a future, it's under construction now. That will help Downton and the folks that are interconnected to be able to make that left. There's also for folks that are coming out of Tulic Way and wanting to turn left, going out Oakall, through the interconnection, and then where, I can't remember if it's Savannah Place, I'm sorry, they kept changing names, but it's between Tulic Way and Blalock. There's a development coming in there, so you'll be able to get from Tulic over to Third Street to get out as well. So there's going to, there will be three options for folks coming out Tulic Way to not have to turn right and then go make a U-turn. And that was discussed at the council meetings before the Downton plan was approved. And so that is sort of, I guess, the evolution of how we've ended, you know, how we're here now. The daycare owner that was the original developer did come in, and I think because of some of the complaints that he's getting from his customers, he was wanting to pursue maybe a leftover into Ernie Road, Ernie Drive. It's a DOT-maintained roadway, and that kind of permission, you know, he'd have to go through those channels at DOT. They have to look at the backup that occurs right there at the bypass in West Holly Springs Road. That drive is only 700 feet away from the intersection. DOT's rules usually, it's depending on speed, but anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 for a full access, where you're turning left in and left out. So it's a very, you know, slim chance, obviously, for the full. Perhaps the leftover is something that they could do some studies and show DOT that that might be acceptable, but that would be on their financial, the burden of them. So that's really just, you know, the update there. And we've, our communications and marketing department has shared that information with some of the adjacent property owners, and I think the church in that area, to help get that word out. We also have met a lot with the food cupboard. I wish we would have probably met with them a little bit before, but since the, when the contractor actually deviated from traffic control plan, created some issues there, and so we've had quite a few meetings with them as well.
So if someone leaving the Little Pros or the medical offices there, they have to take a right, that they want to go back to the bypass, they have to take a right, they'll be able to turn, I guess people were concerned that Tulic Way would become the turnaround. So you said there'll be a new road, so if they, coming out of Little Pros, you take a right onto West Holly Springs Road, but you need to go the other way, where are they going to do that turnaround?
I think at the new.
Is that the new road?
At the new road is where they would turn left. I don't think they'll be able to turn at Tulic, because that will have a median across it.
Okay. So there won't be, okay, that's what I think, that's what the concern I was hearing. They thought that that opening was going to be at Tulic and not at that other road. Okay.
All right. I think the concerns I heard is even though folks, you know, were told in 2010, they didn't realize, I mean, I think, is there a better opportunity, I think, like you said, to talk to folks a little?
We've talked about it for years. We even, you know, we denied some of it and then came back and discussed it again, but I guess because it has been over a few years, but, I mean, it's not changing. So I think giving options like you are to Little Pros, or having them pursue options is probably going to be our best bet right now.
Right. It's just the heads-up, I think, because the food cupboard heads-up was late. So I think those are just some things that we could learn.
Definitely the food cupboard. That was a little bit of a different issue, because it was more of an impact during construction.
Okay.
But the notice of a temporary full-access drive with our comprehensive transportation plan, it shows all the roads that are median-divided. But I think just continuing to highlight that, like if we're before council with a plan that has temporary full, just making a little bit higher note of that.
Right.
Especially when there's a lot of time in between, like we've.
Yeah, there's been.
I drove by one morning, I'm like, oh my God, there's a huge hole. I mean, it was, I don't know if you guys saw it, under construction, it was a stark difference.
Yes.
Do we have like a public communication plan for, like, some of the workarounds that you talked about, how to get around? Like, can we do some maps and like show people how to do this? Like, pardon my ignorance or residents' ignorance, but just to help people visualize how we can get around this, you know, with, once the road is fully constructed, just like, you know, here's how you would get, if you want to get back, make the left, but now you can't, here's the way to do that. Just highlight those roads and sort of a diagram on how we have that, just so we can have some sort of thing we can all help share and just make sure we get it out there.
Yeah, I think especially as we're looking at, you know, widening Holly Springs Road and all that, any of those big, high-impact places, that might be something going forward that we look at, is hey, here's an alternate route.
Yeah, put that on the website, Facebook page, to that.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right.
Anything else? Kendra? No? Okay. I do have one thing to Randy. Like to, next workshop, talk about the Citizens of the Year Award, invite Tony Perna and Jimmy Cobb, I know there was a meeting last week, maybe look at all options with them. Is that possible to have at our next workshop?
Yes, you do have a workshop on next Tuesday, October 8th, and we can certainly add that to your.
Okay. Just want to address that as quickly as possible, so. I don't have anything else. Next is our town manager's report, Randy Harrington.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protown, appreciate that. I have a couple of items. The first item I want to recognize tonight is National Night Out. And some of you may have gone to Tain Park this evening. Having a great event out there. But National Night Out is really, it's an opportunity to promote police and neighborhood partnerships and help build camaraderie in neighborhoods, and hopefully in turn that helps us in terms of having safer and, you know, types of partnerships that we need to have, great policing and safe neighborhoods in our community. So I want to recognize that. I hope folks are leaving their light on tonight as one of the signs there with National Night Out, one of the symbols for the evening. Also with the police department, want to recognize this past weekend, they had the torch run, the 10K, the 5K, the rucksack run, and I was so proud and great to be a part of it and to see, we had a number of police officers out there running in their full gear, which is about 15 to 18 pounds of, you know, police equipment that they have on them, and it's people with the rucksacks. It was a great event, the police department did a great job, and what they did there. We're raising money for big causes for special Olympics. The, also this weekend, Mr. Willison, almost stole my thunder there on Bass Lake Day. But yes, Bass Lake Day this weekend, October 5th, and it is from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at SUG Farm. And the, a lot of activities for a variety of interests of individuals, and so I hope folks will come out there again from 1:00 to 4:00 this Saturday afternoon at SUG Farm. You'll be hearing a little bit more on Friday. We're starting to get ready to ramp up some of our educational efforts related to the yard waste leaf collection. We had a conversation about this a couple of meetings ago, to share some opportunities for us to provide some better predictability for residents and some scheduling changes. And so. And so staff's been working to fine tune those final pieces and you'll start to hear a little bit more about that here this Friday. And then with a more full ramp up and communication plan going out later in October. So I just want to give you a little heads up on that. And the last thing, again, the ISO, what a, what an amazing opportunity and award recognition for, you know, the folks out here and others in our organization, the work at the fire department and, and under the leadership of Chief, you know, Smith, and the group's just done an amazing job. I want to congratulate him. I also want to congratulate, as was mentioned, there are a variety of factors that go into the ISO rating and fire is obviously, you know, one of the biggest components, but there is also that engineering component, there's the, the water component. If you don't have water, you don't fight fires very well. And so we have to have a system that, that meets certain levels and standards. And so I want to recognize that and the other work around code enforcement. I even think Sinder somehow had a role in.
Yeah.
He did a great job, he did his part. And so, but I do just want to recognize that. That is, you think about this, there are close to almost 500 municipalities in North Carolina. We're one of 11 that have this designation. And so it's a great testament to the work that you've done and prior councils and prior predecessors to me and the staff here to position us for a day like this when we can receive an award like this. I want to thank you and congratulate you for that. The, the other thing, and as was mentioned, you know, I don't know exactly how much, but yes, one of the big components of this are typically reduced insurance rates, particularly on the commercial side. And, but certainly our residents as well should hopefully experience some, some benefit from the work on this front. So again, great job, congratulations. That's all I have here this evening.
Awesome, awesome. I'm looking at John. No closed sessions?
We do that all the time.
Great. Motion to adjourn? You won.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.